Which one then? Want to have an ad lib question? No way, really?
So, I have everything but the survey. Hold on one second, let me just...
Oh, it says Mens of Northeastern. How did that happen? Why don't we do that? What are you trying to do?
Just get on the internet, anyplace.
Close it, just close.
Your picture, do you want to talk?
Am I muted now, or unmuted?
You're unmuted. Okay, it's seven o'clock and we're about to open up the planning board meeting.
You can come up here now. Okay.
This is a matter of protocol, we have an open forum coming up. Any individual can identify themselves by name and address, location in about four minutes for discussing anything which is not part of the message. And with that, I'll make the motion open the planning board meeting for this meeting. Yes.
Marty. Josh.
Yes.
Michael.
My Michael's playing?
Yeah, and Mike.
So now, what we'll do is open, the open forum is started as now. So anyone has something they'd like to say to the board, I feel free to do so.
Lynn has something to say.
Yes, I'd like to say thank you for posting the planning board minutes for the August 20th, 2020 draft minutes on the town website within two weeks of the meeting. I find that very helpful and in accordance with the open meeting rules. And I would like to let the community know that the oral arguments for Biggs versus Eden Renewables, Richard Murray, and Duansburg Planning Board are scheduled for October 20th. And that's it, thank you so much.
If, this is Christina Lucchetti's 1320 Alexander Road. It's a comment, just the audio is kind of hard to hear. I don't know if you have, I can't see what the board meeting looks like, but I don't know if you have a microphone or if everybody has microphones in, it kind of comes in and comes out in terms of being able to hear speakers. I can hear Ms. Deffer very clearly, but it's hard to hear anybody else. Thank you.
Are you sure you're picking up through this and not through your computer audio? Do you guys hear us? If you go to your sound settings and you can choose your audio device and choose that microphone, not your computer.
Do you know where the sound settings are? Chat.
Is that what that thing is?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what that is. If you're going to try to work with you on this audio issue, we apologize for the inconvenience causing. Too high tech speaker, it seems to be. Put something in on my phone, I believe still, but not working currently. But if anyone hearing nothing to the contrary, we will move to close the open forum. Yes.
Mike. Lynn.
Yes.
Marty.
Yes. 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 Next item on the agenda is our series of public hearings. I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing for Adam Conway. He seeks especially use for amendment to a special use permit. And some come from, Adam campus here. Once we open up, yeah. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Okay, Adam, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, yeah.
He was up to speed on where we are and this is an opportunity for, again, reiterate what you're doing and we won't take any comments that are Russian.
Sure, no problem. My plan is for just an amendment to the special use permit. Special use permit presently allows for 100 or up to 150 storage units. And I'm asking to have that increased from 150 to up to 300 storage units on my five acre property which is located at 3882 Western Turnpike in Duansburg. There's no guarantee that I'll build 300, but you know, as I grow, I would like the ability to do that. And as you can see on the screen, for those of you that can see that, that is the plot plan that would show, you know, kind of the way I would build. The first one would be labeled one and then two, three, and then four is actually an expansion on a pre-existing building. And they're all just storage units, there's no climbing control, there's nothing of that nature. It's just the normal garage type door unit. And that's what I'm asking for is just to amend the special use for more unit ability.
Are there any comments from any of the participants at the hearing yet? Questions? Okay, hearing nothing to that, in fact, we'll have to close, make a recommendation and close the public hearing.
One second.
Yes. 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 That closes the public hearing. The next part of the process would be to reaffirm the secret finding of a native declaration. And Elizabeth, I believe, has that prepared and can read that for the audience.
I do, and the planning board members each have a copy of this. The town of Duansburg declared itself community agency at last month's public meeting. And this is a secret unlisted action and we prepare the following preliminary deck. And before I start, can everyone hear me?
I can hear you.
Thank you. I'll read this slowly. The town of Duansburg Planning Board has completed an environmental review of the proposed amendment to the special use permit allowing an additional 150 individual units, increasing the maximum total of 300 lots on the existing five acre parcel for Mr. Conway. The proposed project is not located in a critical environmental area. It is not in the 100 year flood plain. It is not a remediation site. It is not a historic resource listed or eligible for the state or national register of historic places. And it is not an archaeologically sensitive area. The proposal is consistent with the existing community character and no aesthetic impacts are anticipated. The proposed action will have no impact or increase in the use of energy and will have no impacts on water or sewage as there is no proposal for well or septic. The proposed action will have little or no effect to natural resources and no wetlands have been identified on the site. The proposed action should not increase any potential erosion. Temporary soil erosion control measures will be installed to prevent the potential for stormwater pollution. If disturbance exceeds more than one acre, a stormwater pollution prevention plan will be required in accordance with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation regulations. The proposal is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan and compliant with the town zoning ordinance for the C2 commercial light industrial district. Based on this information, the planning board has determined that the proposed amendment to the special use permit will not have the potential for any significant adverse impact on the environment. And a negative declaration is made for the purposes of Article 8 of the environmental conservation law. I will make that motion.
Liz.
Yes.
Marty. Dylan.
You know what, I'm going to turn my down.
I think we will complete the process with the exception of a motion to approve the application for Adam Conway and the construction of additional storage units at 382 Western Turnpike. I mean, that motion that the planning board approved that. Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Done, well, you're good to go.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate all your time and thank you again, you have a great night.
Thank you. Next agenda item is the public hearing. Make the motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Who's representing Charlie tonight?
Fred Metzger, Land Surveyor. Sure, real quick, I'll keep it brief though. Taking the existing two acre parcel located at, hang on one second, just got to zoom in a little bit so I can read these numbers real quick. 5434 Western Turnpike, just down from the town hall there. And looking to take the existing non-conforming because it's a two acre parcel with two primary buildings on it and separate it into two one acre parcels that'll meet all the existing zoning requirements. The last couple meetings through, we had a couple other additional items that were requested. I added and updated as needed from last time and delivered 10 more prints to you folks. As well as, I believe, Mr. O'Day dropped off the paperwork for the well information. And I believe Mr. Callahan contacted the office in regards to the easement that they needed drafted. And that's basically it in a nutshell.
Yeah, you know, when that easement was dropped off here, because due to the way things are running by mail here, I'm not sure that the board members have had an opportunity to see that, that just recently. Hello?
Hello? Hang on, once.
Fred, you there?
Yes, I'm still here, yeah, I was just, I was trying to adjust it to see if I could do something to hear a little better. I didn't hear what that last comment was or question.
We're trying to ascertain when those agreements were dropped off here. Were they given directly to Dale or, we don't have them and Dale's absent.
Oh, okay, yeah, you know what, I spoke with Melissa this morning, I asked, inquired about that. I thought she mentioned everything was there because I dropped the maps off probably a week after the prior meeting and I believe Bruce got the paperwork there within the week after that as well.
No, we have all that, he's talking about when Paul Callahan called Dale.
Man. Can you, I'm sorry, it just, you keep fading in and out.
We're just asking, did you just call, drop by the actual easement or has he not done that yet?
I don't know why, but I can't hear anything. I got great video, I can see everybody clearly.
Fred, questions, is there an executed agreement in hand somewheres?
Oh, you know, again, the day after the meeting, I called and spoke with Paul. He was a little curious as to why, again, kind of like myself with doing an easement from yourself to yourself. But he was supposed to give a ring to speak with someone because he was, he himself was unsure what it was that needed to be drafted because it's tough to do an easement from yourself to yourself. Usually there's, there's two parties involved, there's something else involved where you would need something of that nature.
So the answer is no.
Again, I'm not sure what he did or how he followed up, that's why.
Again, you updated the maps, they look good, we're missing that executed document for the well sharing. We could continue with public hearing and the final conclusion was that we have that document.
Yeah, would we be able to open the public hearing, address any comments if any? And then basically, you know, look for an approval this evening contingent upon getting that documents from Paul's office?
We could, we could do that, the problem is we've asked for it several weeks in a row. So why don't we open the public hearing, let's hear if there's any comments.
Okay, that's what we'll do. All right, I'll make the motion to open the public hearing for the. Are there any comments from the public concerning this proposal? That you would like the boards to consider in deliberations? I'm trusting our lines of communication are still open, everyone can still hear the dialogue here.
Yes, I can, your voice seems to come in clearly, everybody else kind of fades out.
I'm, I'm the closest in a microphone, I have to talk to that.
I would just close it, if no one has any comments, unless, you know, it's not, it's not complicated, it's not changing the physical appearance.
I'll second the motion. Yes. Yes.
Liz.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Yes. This was a type two secret action, we don't have a, a statement to read. And what we're going to do, I believe, Theresa, give us some guidance, can we approve contingent upon?
Yes, you can, conditioned upon, you can approve the subdivision conditioned upon the easement agreement to be recorded along with the 2D, because there'll be 2D. to be recorded along with the 2D, because there'll be 2D now as well. And is everybody satisfied? Is there nothing else missing on the map or anything?
Please speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Okay, Fred, what we're going to do is recommend approving the subdivision contingent upon the receipt of an executed agreement for the well sharing. And once, once you.
Provide that.
Have that in an acceptable form, and Theresa will review it for us to make sure it's legally acceptable, then we'll, we'll sign off on it. But as far as the public goes, closed, the project's approved, but you have, you owe us that piece of paper before you can proceed.
Understandable. Yes, sir.
That's the motion.
Okay.
Yeah?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes. All right, Fred, we should get a set of documents.
Will do, sir. Thank you. Have a good night, guys.
Third public hearing on the table is a application from Charlie Rhodes to do a lot line adjustment on the subdivision that was on Alexander Road. I'll make the motion to open the public hearing for that project. Yes.
Michael.
Mike.
Yes.
Liz. Yes. Marty.
Yes. Yeah. In our last meeting, we could have, I think, all the information that we needed, but we wanted to give the residents an opportunity to comment on the proposal, because there's been a number of, you know, feelings out there that things weren't really by the book. But we have some letters that were submitted, a letter from Christina Lucchini and Mark Boyer Helsby regarding the lot line adjustment. Who's representing Charlie tonight?
Joe Bianchini with ABD Engineers.
Give us a little rundown on that. It's pretty simple.
Yeah, this is a lot line adjustment between lot four, which is being reduced from 8.7 acres to 6.03 acres. And then that's about point, 2.68 acres being reduced from that lot, and it's being added to the remaining lands that Charlie has, the big lot, which brings that up to 49.78 acres. It provides for some frontage on Alexander Road, as asked by the planning board. At the last meeting, I did go out with the highway superintendent, Mr. Reed, and we looked at where the driveway would go, and there is sufficient site distance at that location. And I believe Mr. Reed has provided the planning board with a memo to that effect. So that's all it is, is just the adjustment of the lot line between lot four and the remaining lands.
Yeah, it's a pretty, you know, straightforward request. And I'd say we did have, we do have acknowledgement in writing from the highway superintendent that the inspection of a third plus there would be acceptable from a safety perspective, the site distance is correct. So we'll open it up to the public now. I know there's probably some people that want to make some statements. So identify yourself and let the board know where you stand on this.
I'll go. Can everybody hear me? This is Christina Lucchini, 1320 Alexander Road. Can, is my voice clear?
Yes, very clear.
Yes, okay. I did submit a letter, and I'm going to take a couple of moments to read that letter. There's no sense in restating it, but I am just going for the audience members to hear. Dear members of the planning board, I am writing regarding Charles Rhodes' request for a lot line adjustment on the property on Alexander Road. Please consider this letter as part of the public hearing and include in the supporting documents posted on with the agenda minutes for this, for this particular meeting. The representative from ABD Engineers, Joe Bianchini, indicated that he has the necessary information for adding a driveway and that Rhodes has no plans for future building, quote, "at this time," end quote. That was said at the last meeting. I recall those were the same words used in 2017, when Mr. Rhodes planned to build a four-unit apartment building on a single acre of the 74-acre parcel. He had no plans for future building on the remaining 73 acres, quote, "at this time," end quote. The homeowners on Alexander Road reminded the planning board that, according to the language in the special use permit determination of significance, that, quote, "each potential impact should be assessed considering its setting, probability of occurring, duration, irreversibility, geographic scope, and magnitude. Also consider the potential for short-term, long-term, and cumulative impacts," end quote. This reminder was offered to prompt the board to question Mr. Rhodes on his plans for the remaining 73 acres in addition to framing the decision-making on granting his special use permit for the apartments. Those questions were never asked. Rhodes' special use permit request ended not because of planning board action, but because he did not update paperwork within a certain time period. There are numerous examples of repeated subdivisions where the board indicated that their decision-making must be guided by considering the cumulative impacts, excess of lot numbers, and quality of life impacts on neighbors from this kind of segmentation, impacts such as water availability, road safety, and property values. To support my examples, I can provide the individuals' names for these requested subdivisions. I didn't include them here. I have expressed my frustration that these parcel divisions earned the board's concern for long-term impacts and neighbors' quality of life, whereas the Rhodes project was not held to account for the same issues. Now, we are faced with Mr. Rhodes requesting the eight-acre parcel be reduced to create a two-plus-acre buildable lot with a driveway, representing himself as though he has no plans for that lot other than putting in a driveway. Of course, we must ask, why is he adding a driveway if he has no plans to build two-acre parcel? What will he do with the seven-acre parcel and then the two five-acre parcels? And what about the 47-acre parcel with the newly-built road leading back to it? How many parcels could that be divided into? Allowing this one segmentation of one parcel sets the precedent that each of the other parcels can be segmented into smaller buildable lots. The effect of this piecemeal development goes against the language of the zoning ordinance purpose statement that, quote, "fosters appropriate growth and development," end quote. It also goes against the zoning ordinance's special use permit language, quote, "to assure overall lower densities of residential development in areas without municipal sewage treatment facilities or public water," end quote. I'm sure that Mr. Rhodes' representative, Joe Bianchini, would state that Mr. Rhodes has no plans, quote, "at this time," to further subdivide these parcels, but granting this first subdivision sets the sage for future subdivisions. At what point will it be determined that growth is no longer appropriate and lower densities are no longer assured? Will it be at the point when traffic on this narrow, limited-visibility road becomes even more dangerous? Will it be when the current homeowners have water restrictions due to overbuilding? Or will it be when property values are diminished due to the combination of these factors? This new request of a lot line adjustment must be denied so the neighboring homeowners can enjoy the quality of life of access to water resources, road safety, and stable property values. These quality-of-life issues are directly threatened by the excessive building that is likely to occur if Mr. Rhodes has allowed this first step in further subdividing a parcel on property that has already been subdivided. It is easy to foresee these further subdivisions on this property, that there will be further subdivisions on this property if he is granted this approval. I appreciate that the planning board decided to hold this public hearing on this latest request by Mr. Rhodes, given the history of homeowner concerns about the activities on the parcel. This shows that the board is open to considering the real-life issues that affect those who own homes and view those homes as an investment in their lives and in their community with the expectation that their investment be protected by the decision-makers of the town. It is my sincere hope that this request to increase the number of buildable lots on this Alexander Road parcel is denied. The original parcel was divided according to Mr. Rhodes' design. The eight-acre lot exists. It is being developed, and the person building there was fully aware of the size of that lot when he began his building process. There is no need to make changes to that lot or any of the other lots. Changes will only serve to jeopardize the quality of life of the current residents on Alexander Road. I bring all of these things up. You're mentioning this as though it's a simple lot line adjustment. But we all can predict that there's going to be further plans for these particular parcels. We have road safety issues on Alexander Road. What are the plans for this particular parcel that has to be brought to light before we start moving lot lines around on the property? I hope that you do deny this. I'll wait to hear if anybody else has anything else to say, and then I may step in again with some other comments. Thank you very much, and do thank you for your service to the community.
Thank you, Chris. Is there others that would like to comment? Identify your name and address and share your issues.
So you can say yes. Yes, we would, we would like to comment.
Okay, who's speaking?
This is Harry Ringermacher, and we border the property on the east end. We wish to note that we've observed that all the land up to the properties of Ringermacher and Smith have been cleared, and there is a road going, a clearing road going all the way around the border of the property within 100 feet or so of the Ringermacher lands. That suggests that the, that Mr. Rhodes plans future development as far east as the lands of Ringermacher and Smith. So we are concerned about that in light of what Christina just said, because that suggests simply that it's not going to end very quickly. Thank you.
Hi, this is Scott Perillo. I'd like to take a minute here to address the comments. Right here, me.
Yep, Scott, what's your address?
4958 Western Turnpike, Duane'sburg. Oh, this lot is a lot that I'm looking to build a house on, of course, and the number of lots is not increasing, okay? I can understand the concerns of further subdividing this, these parcels here, but there are no additional lots being created. I simply want, or requesting that the, that the board approve this here so that I can close on this land, build a house. That's all I'm looking to do. So I understand the concerns about additionally subdividing this, these parcels into, you know, additional lots, which would have to be approved by the board and for any kind of building permit is granted. That would have to be approved. So this is a simple lot line adjustment. That's all it is. Thank you.
Scott, where is the property that you want to build on? Is it on Western Avenue?
I have to know who's talking.
This is Judy Ringermacher.
The, the lot is actually known as Lot Number Four, which is 1367 Alexander Road. So it is the, the, one of the lots that is closest to the Duane'sburg soccer field, so behind a high school.
Thank you.
This is Lynn Bruning, 13388 Duane'sburg Road. And I would like to comment that during this difficult time, people can't necessarily access the records at town hall, and the minutes do not include any of the site plans for any of the public hearings. I think it's difficult for any of the adjoining parcel owners and surrounding neighbors to understand a project and make informed commentary without access to the documents. Perhaps this hearing should be continued, and all documents are posted on the internet so that people can actually understand what is going on with the project. Thank you.
Scott Perillo here again. Just wanted to make one other comment concerning postponing this public hearing for another month. We are getting into, towards the tail end of construction. I can't move forward with building this home by putting off contractors that have already, have lined up to get started here, so I can understand the, the need to maybe look at some additional information at the, at the town, but again, I can't emphasize this enough. This is a lot line adjustment. There are no additional lots being created at this time. Same number of lots. It's just moving the property line. That's it. Thank you.
I have to ask, this is Christina Lucchini. I have to ask the question then. Why is a driveway being put in if it's not going to lead to future additional lots or the potential for yet another access road to the large, now 49-acre parcel? So they would have two access roads, one that is currently built. And now is this to be used as another access road to that property? I think that's a legitimate question about this particular piece of property.
Joe, is that a question you could answer for us? Joe, you have to unmute your stop.
I don't know what happened to, this is Scott Perillo again. I don't know what happened to Joe.
I'm here. I can't hear what the question was. Was it addressed to me?
It was, Joe. Joe, can you hear me?
Barely.
Okay. What we'd like to know is, what's the intention with the driveway? Not the one for Mr. Perillo, but the other one. Are you actually building a road there or not?
Are you asking about the driveway?
Yeah, I'm not, Joe, I'm not planned. There's, you delineate a driveway that goes.
We show a driveway there. That doesn't, it's just to show a driveway so that we know there could be a driveway there and sometime in the future. Charlie isn't intending to build it. He just wanted to make sure that he could put a driveway at that location. So we showed it there, and we went out with the highway superintendent, make sure that it was a valid location for a driveway. Charlie intends to build on the other side of that big lot, where I show a proposed house and septic system up there. But maybe you might want to put a driveway in. That's just so we have that option.
But what, I can't, I'm sorry, this is Christina Lucchini again. Yes, I cannot see any of these maps. I don't know what we're talking about, so it's very difficult to visualize this. So it's a driveway to nothing, a driveway to nowhere? Is it a? I would assume that one would put. I would assume that one would put, go to the trouble of, of having. A driveway, I don't know if the word is surveyed, uh, whatever the word would be. Unless there is. A plan. To start building on something, a piece of land. I, I understand that at, at this, you know, we will go back to the, that phrase, no, no plans at this time. But that would suggest. That with a driveway, that there actually is a plan. To be building a house or something on the property. Knowing that Mr. Rhodes is a builder. So that kind of seems to make sense to me. That that's part of a future plan.
Um, Scott Perillo here again, and I, I, I can't emphasize this enough, whether or not he decides to put one giant home back there. Or several homes, the, the planning board would have to approve. That this is simply a lot line adjustment, no additional lots being created. So be able to speculate on what may eventually happen down the road. I think that. Should be tabled for the time in which an approach proposal is brought to the board to do. Uh, such, whatever that is. So again, this is, I, I hate to have the waters muddied here over, over something that is really quite simple. Uh, the, the driveway was approved. Uh, by the highway department. He's choosing to put a driveway in at this particular, uh, part of the road. If he decides to bring an application to the planning or to further subdivide that, then that's going to be something that would have to be, uh, looked at, looked at. This, this, uh, what, what we're doing here is completely separate. Thank you.
Yeah, you know, and I appreciate this again, Christina Lucchides. I do appreciate that, Mr. Perillo, that, um. But it's difficult to understand the history of this entire project and, and as, as homeowners are frustrations with this entire project and the. How it's evolved over time, which I'm not going to go back over again here. You know, you are, you were fully aware that it's an eight acre parcel when you put in your own driveway. I don't know the extent of what you've done on the property. But it was, you were fully aware that it's an eight acre piece. And I know you just want to change it around right now, and that's, that's part of this discussion.
Well, and I.
But it's hard to appreciate the history and I don't want to dominate the time here. But I will say, back when this, I think it was a year or so ago. When Mr. Biancini represented Mr. Rhodes as taking this entire seventy four acre. Parcel and dividing it into the five. Parcels, the five lots that, that exist right now, forty seven, five, five, seven and eight. At the public hearing of that, I expressed my skepticism, given the history of this entire Rhodes parcel. I expressed skepticism then. And I fear that my skepticism is now in process of being justified. To you, it's a simple lot line adjustment, even though you were fully aware that it was an eight acre parcel when you began your building project.
I, I have to interrupt.
You, you simplify it that way. But to us on Alexander Road. Who, you use the phrase muddy the water. Well, we are actually experiencing muddied waters. Dry wells. And water issues as a result of some of the activities going on at that parcel. Water issues that are costing us some money. We can predict. That whatever is done. That time and time again, we will be revisiting this project because this is, I think, year three or four of this project, if not four or five. We live on a narrow, limited visibility road. Each winter cars are pulled out of the ditch. In fact, right across from your home, but your proposed lot home is. Walking on our road. There's limited visibility. Cars drive. Well, too fast. No one can control if it's a through, through way from twenty down into, um, the school area. No one can control that. But we have to be concerned. That any other. Future speculative building plans, and you may say that each plan has to come before the board. That is our specific fear. At what point? Do any of those? Building plans? If they're approved and approved and approved, at what point has our road been? Become dangerous? Not threatened dangerous as it is right now, but downright dangerous. These are our concerns. We have water issues currently.
Can you hear me?
Not actually really, and I know I feel like I am dominating this conversation, but that just shows. How very concerned I am by all of this. My skepticism is being. Well, justified.
Because I think the, the board is well aware of the, the potential issues with future development of, of that. There's forty nine acres left that Charlie wrote zones there. And it's his land and he may at some point decide he wants to put ten more lots there. I don't think we can control that process. He does have access. On the other end of the road to get into that back lot. He's already built kind of a super highway back there, right there himself. And so we should, we do share your concerns about the potential for. You know, more development, but again, there is a process and it is frustrating as you, uh, are with the history of this. I think the. The culmination of that process was pretty favorable towards the residents. He ended up with five single family homes. Was it five or four? Four on, on that big stretch of road, which are nice sized lots and, you know, I don't think that's, uh, really. You know, a bad thing for the neighborhood or represents a dangerous situation. Now if there were another fifty homes back in the, the back parcel, that might be something that. The board's really going to have to consider as far as highway capacity congestion, impacting water resources. But. It's, it's hard for the board to say, no, we think, we think. And we're projecting Charlie's thoughts that he's going to put a road back where that driveway is. And suddenly there's going to be this massive development. I don't, I don't really know if we have. Yeah. Really the tools to say, no, you can't put a driveway there. Because it, it comply, it's compliant with the zoning criteria. From a secret perspective, if he decides to put, you know. Any number of homes back there, he's going to have to come to the board for a subdivision approval. And we'll have to go through this long, you know, tedious process once again. And hopefully the results would be again, you know, acceptable to, to the residents. I, I think, you know. I haven't heard from the residents that, that the conclusion of that two year process was results were, were, you know. Were horrible for the neighborhood. Most people said, okay, you know, houses are equal in space, the lots are big. So I kinda. Yeah, I mean, I, I said it was a simple process, but it's, you always could, the board will always have another bite on, bite at the apple on this. If Charlie comes back with a huge proposal. And we haven't had any of his, any kind of demands from him, like when we, on his first project, he kinda, I think he got the message that. This was going to be a tough, a tough route for him to, to, to go on, and that's why he changed his proposal. I think that the process is the process and that's what, you know, as a board, we're stuck with. You know, guiding and applicant or proposal through a process. We just can't say, well, we think you're going to build, you know, a hundred homes. So we're not going to let Scott, you know, subdivide his property. They seem unfortunate or it's like, we don't care about your concerns, but I think we're kind of, you know, we have certain rules we gotta go by. Now, is there, are there others that have comments? We'd like to hear some others.
Yes, Sarah Guzdowski, nine thirty eight Alexander Road. Uh, we live right across the street from where currently Mr. Rhodes has three. Driveways and roads going into the back forty seven acres. Um, I sent a letter to Ms. Depper earlier today and I just wanted to read it as part of the public hearing. Um, dear Duane'sburg planning board. The letter and questions are in regards to the application twenty dash nine Rhodes Charles section block lot sixty five dot zero zero dash two dot forty five. The request by Mr. Rhodes for a lot line adjustment at thirteen sixty seven Alexander Road. Which is located in an R two agricultural and residential zone of the town of Duane'sburg brings up a number of questions and concerns. I would like to request that this letter be included. And supporting documents and posted with the September seventeenth meeting minutes. The activities excavation, drilling and blasting that have occurred on Mr. Rhodes' Alexander property. Has an immediate and direct impact on our property's water supply. On May sixth and May eighth, two thousand twenty, there were numerous substantial dynamite blasts done on Mr. Rhodes' property. These dynamite blasts shook our entire home, trees, shrubs and well. On both dates, main drilling and blasting, the company who did the drilling and dynamite blasting for Mr. Rhodes' property. Asked to put a seismograph machine on our property. The aftermath of the powerful dynamite blasting caused our property's water supply. Something that was very upsetting to say the least. We have dealt with cloudy, dirty water for months. The silt that was able to come through our water filtration system due to the particle size being so microscopic. This event makes it evident that Mr. Rhodes does not have concern for his project's impact on the neighborhood. And his neighbor's water supplies and well being. Mr. Rhodes was made aware of our water issues by main drilling and blasting company. In the past, the planning board has questioned the cumulative impacts and quality of life impacts on numerous other applications. We are requesting that the same scrutiny and discretion be taken by the planning board. And what they approve regarding the current application by Mr. Rhodes and any further applications or requests pertaining to this acreage and lots on Alexander Road. Um, this application, I know it's for a lot line adjustment, but I have a number of questions. Um, that I would like to see the, the planning board ask Mr. Rhodes about this. Um, I bring up the water issue just to make everyone aware that maybe this is a simple lot line adjustment, but. Again, as Ms. Lucchides has mentioned, there is a history and. Why is there so much drilling and blasting going on this back forty six acres? Which now will have a road to connect it to this proposed two point six acre lot line adjustment if something. Bigger isn't being done and that bigger picture needs to be asked because it does impact us. As neighbors that live here on this road, our water and our overall well being. Um, I do have a number of questions. Um. As far as has Mr. Rhodes had a DEC stormwater permit for this project? Um, as per DEC guidelines and construction permit paperwork must be available on the construction site and in place. Before the ground is disturbed. Has the town confirmed that this has been done and is on site? Uh, is there an NOI acknowledgement letter from DEC? Is there a stormwater pollution prevention plan? Is there a notice of intent signed by the owner and the stormwater pollution prevention plan preparer? Um, is there a stormwater prevention plan or acceptance form? Is there a site log book including certifications, site inspections, reports and stormwater pollution plan updates? Is there a letter of permissions to disturb this more than five acre lot? Um, what is Mr. Rhodes' overall sub plan for all of these subdivided lots? Is it a plan to encompass them all together? I feel like. We need to be asking this question to really understand what letting. Or approving this lot line adjustment may have as an impact as a whole down the road. Um. And why is Mr. Rhodes applying for a lot line adjustment so soon after subdividing in twenty nineteen? Why was this not originally done? Um, and I understand that Mr. Rhodes wants to reserve the right to put the driveway in the newly proposed two point six acres. But there's already. A road and two other driveways going to this forty seven acre lot. Why does there need to be a fourth access point? Um, I just want to thank the planning board for, for your time and careful consideration to this matter. Again, Sarah Guzdowski, nine thirty eight Alexander Road. Thank you.
Lynn wants to speak.
I just like to guess some of those questions you had about the stormwater permit. And the town of Duane'sburg is not in MS four.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Because the town of Duane'sburg is not in MS four community, which means we don't have separate, uh, Florida San Diego sewers. That program has been administered by DEC.
But shouldn't the town be concerned that he's following state DEC guidelines?
The town is, and Dale has visited the site several times and Dale has informed me that DEC. Has inspected the site for the purposes of, of standing compliance with the stormwater. The policies there. So we can either.
So I'm sorry, I'm, I'm having a hard time hearing and, and then therefore understanding, but you're saying he does not have to supply a stormwater permit plan?
Now, he has to provide a notice of intent to DEC. He has to have this, this whip on site. Those are DEC regulations. They're not the town's rights.
I understand that, but shouldn't the town make sure that he's following DEC's regulations?
He's. The inspections done by Dale, if he sees something, he, he's got a relationship with DEC where he can call them and say. Can you come out and look at this? I think we have, we may have some potential issues, but he told me that DEC has been there at least twice, if not three times. To look at the activities that are going on up there. And, uh, if you like, we can get a contact for you at DEC. If you'd like to discuss, you know, the findings.
Yeah, that, that would be wonderful. I would appreciate that. And I just. You know, it, it may not directly correlate to this lot line adjustment, but just so the board is aware of. The activity that is going on over there, though it is not directly policed by the town, I understand that it is governed more by the state and DEC. The disruption that this individual is causing to our neighborhood and road is extremely impacting. I have three small children and months of dirty, salty water is not acceptable. We, we had a beautiful well. I have all the documentation, all the quantity and quality, quantity testing to prove I had a perfect well before all of the shenanigans started. So. I just. Allowing a lot line adjustment, like why was this not originally done last year when he had the whole thing surveyed and subdivided?
Uh, Scott Perillo here again. I, I wrote a letter and I would like to request that the board, uh, read that aloud. I think it'll address some of the concerns, uh, that have been raised by Ms. Lucchides and yourself. Thank you. Um, unfortunately I don't have it in front of me though, but I can, you know, kind of summarize here what I wrote. Last, during last month's meeting, the question, uh, I believe was raised by you as to why I would want to reduce. Um, from, you know, the eight, eight acres down to six. And the contour of the land, I think, is, is really the. Should have been contemplated when this, when these lots were first divided. There is a large ridge. And there are two acres that are on top of this ridge. They serve absolutely no purpose to me. Or enhance the value of the lot that I'm looking to, to have adjusted here to six acres. They go up a ridge and have additional two acres and pay for that additional. Essentially cost per acre. cost per acre, doesn't make any sense. You know, increase in taxes on that. So, yes, the original line was eight-point-seven acres. I looked and said, geez, you know, this makes no sense to have, have two acres and change that I can't do anything with. I want to climb up a giant ridge to go up on top and do what? So...
Mr. Perillo, can I ask, are you requesting Mr. Rhodes have this lot line adjustment before you buy it, or does he want it before you purchase the land from him?
In order for the closing to go through, the slot line adjustment has to be done. That's...
That wasn't the question I asked.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm curious if you want this to happen before you close, or if Mr. Rhodes is asking for this from you before closing.
I want it done before closing.
Is there any possibility you and Mr. Rhodes are having some future plan to work together with this whole piece of land?
No, not at all, not at all. I'm in the insurance business, I'm not in the land developing business.
Okay.
No, so...
And I apologize, you kind of walked into, like I said, a history, and I know Ms. Lucchides has mentioned a history of this, and you're probably the guy in the middle now, but it...
And I could...
Extremely, extremely curious as to why things like this would be happening at this point in the game.
And I could appreciate that, and, you know, believe me, I'm in full support of the neighbors.
Hey, guys, 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 listen, this is a public hearing, so it's not an opportunity for people to talk back and forth. You're to give your comments to the board, and the board will do their best to answer the question, okay? So, so right now, the question is, Scott, do you have anything that you want to add to your comments to the board? And, um, Mrs. Wazowski, do you have any comments that you want to make to the board? Okay?
Yes, I understand.
This is Mark Wazowski, Sarah's husband, directly across the street from these properties and driveways. We've been waiting for a while now. We would love to expand our house and our property and what we're doing here, make it our home forever. But honestly, I swear on my kid's life, every day this summer, just about, we couldn't be outside, as you read in my letter, because of the diesel fumes floating through the air. I couldn't be on my hot tub, I couldn't be on the deck, it was disgusting, not to mention all the excavators, dump trucks and the shale smashing around. We're just, I understand he has the right, and I'd like to see him, I love heavy equipment myself, but we would like a idea of what the final project is here, whether we stay here or not. We'd like to, but there's no idea what's really going to be here in the long run, and it's getting ridiculously frustrating. That's what we're looking for, and, um, any information would help, really. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Mark, I think the board understands the concerns that are being expressed.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. The board, I think, is all aware of the concerns that the community has about the next phase of this property, if there is going to be one. You can speculate whether the simple lot line adjustment will result in a massive development right there or a minor development. It's all speculation at this point, and I don't, you know, as long as Mr. Rhodes is doing something on his own property right now, and he's not, you know, violating any environmental laws, which, well, you know, I have to make sure he's not. But there's, I don't see that there's a lot that we can do in like a speculative fashion. We want to prove this because you're not telling us what you might want to do next year. Now, Charlie, I'm seeing some of his projects, there's one outside of Sloneville where he's always operating heavy equipment, he built a kind of a nice setup up there outside of Sloneville, put some ponds and stuff. But that's, I think that's the type of individual he is, he's just a construction guy, he likes to build stuff, but he's not going to be building subdivision, whatever, the proper process that went through with the planning board. He can go up there and hold those all he wants, and I guess it's his prerogative, just as if there was a cornfield up there and there was some farmer with a hundred horsepower tractor going back and forth twenty-four hours a day and spreading manure, you know, it's like, it's kind of the same thing, it's his property. But if he wants to change the nature of the property, there's going to be a process, but he has to go through it. It's not going to be an easy process. Again, the history in that, in your neighborhood, I think the board did a good job, despite, you know...
No, I agree so far, yeah.
But we can't really say, it's like, it's like, it sounds like, well, you know, I mean, some people have large parcels of land. I happen to know, this is, Lucchides has ninety acres now, we can't say, well, you know, we know that someday she's going to put in fifty homes back there, you know? And I am thirty acres land, and so it's all, the speculative nature of decision-making is extremely difficult. You know, I don't think we can really hold up a project because someone speculates a potential adverse impact, you know? It has to be kind of more concrete than that. So the board is kind of in a tough place. We understand the issues, for sure. It's pretty clear to me, like, you see the roads, I took a ride back in there last week myself, and he's got a large area cleared. I think the three, there's really not three roads, I think those other two roads are driveways for the two other lots. He has one major, major road going back there, and whether he continued that road out, uh, where he's requesting a lot line adjustment, if he did or didn't, I don't, I don't think that would really impact his ability to develop that whole area back there, because it could be just like a big two-lot subdivision like Sage Hill is. So, like, you know, it's not necessarily the harbinger of the next step of a, of a major development, you know? We hear your concerns and, you know... Is there any other?
Who hasn't spoken before?
Someone wants to speak?
Yes, this is Ray Berry at ten seventy Alexander Road. I just wanted to express my same concerns as Christine and Sarah about the whole Rhodes property. I feel by allowing this lot line adjustment, there's no doubt that he's had the town there already to, for, to see if it would even spec as a driveway to put through there. So if they really think that the driveway's in question, then why would he even bring the town in to look at it? Obviously, he's going to have a through road through there, he's got most of the road done already. And as much as I understand Mr. Perillo's frustration about wanting to get going on this, this whole project, I, because it's eight acres and he can only use six of it, he's trying to say that, you know, he would or wouldn't buy the property. Now, I don't know who the heck has property that can use every square footage of it, but I understand, too, that the town's hands being tied in this whole process, but you got to understand that if you think he's not going to put a through road there, then outside you some oceanfront property in Arizona.
Well, it's true, and the board did request, as part of the review of this project, that our highway superintendent...
Okay, it's still going on.
Still going on.
Look at...
I can't hear it, though.
Look at that site to make sure that it could be an approvable road cut, because if the conclusion was there was no site distance, then we, then the board would have reason to simply deny this, uh, this lot line adjustment because it would create an unbuildable situation. Okay? But it does comply with the site distance...
It complies, but you got to understand, too, I'm sure it's more of an easement into that back property than a, than a, considered a building lot itself.
I have, what, some swamp land before, you know? And, you're right, it's, to me, it's very obvious that he has something in mind, because why would you just spend all that money on a road that goes like that or do it? You know, he's got something in mind, but he simply just can't do it because he wants to. He'll be back here and he'll go through a rigorous process. And at that point, you know, the number of wells and septic things, the soil's pretty poor up there, you know, probably well-known.
Well, I think the biggest concern for the residents on this road is that Mr. Rhodes can't be trusted. Every time we come into something, something changes, and, and I understand he bought the property, he's paying taxes on it, but, you know, I just went through three months because I had to get a variance off my property line adjacent to a vacant property, and I was questioned because I have ten acres that I couldn't put my garage somewhere else other than the end of my driveway. So, I mean, I basically told the zoning boards, they can come here, I can walk my property, and to try to understand that, but this guy seems to be able to do whatever he wants because it's his property. And again, every time something comes up, something gets changed or something gets added.
I mean, the board is well aware of what's going on up there, so...
I totally understand that, and I appreciate the board, and I know to a certain extent you guys' hands are tied also, but it seems every couple of months, something else comes up, something else comes up, and then again, the board's hands are tied again, so basically, you know, it's just, I appreciate you taking the rest of the neighborhood into consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other commenters in the audience?
Lynn Burning, would the board please clarify? I think what I've heard tonight, and then the site plan is very difficult, I wish these were included in a package, you know, so we could look at it prior. Would the board please clarify where the forty-seven acres is and what portion of land are people discussing has been cleared?
Well, we have, we have some full-size plans, and I don't know if you can see the screen here, Melissa's got a copy of the plot on the screen. You can see that on your computer, it's pretty simple, there's one, two, three, four, four major lots, Scott Perillo's lot is the lot to the, let's see, the east on Alexander Road, lot four, and there's a large parcel that's would almost be landlocked, basically, except there's an access road on the north end of the property that goes to the rear, and there's forty-nine acres up there. There's a lot of vacant property up there, the lay of the land is pretty flat, I was up there, actually, you know, I mean, I did, I think we will see Charlie back here at some point, not going to speak for him, but, you know, but we'll have to go through the process.
The forty-seven acres, is that what he's been clearing?
He's, he's been working up there, doing something. I don't know what constitutes clearing. I know he's put a driveway in, he's got a gravel pad up there, but as far as, I don't think he's clear-cut the property. Has he taken a lot of other, I have, yeah.
Okay, I would just like to say this, that what solar developers do is they prep the site prior to coming to the board for permitting. And what that allows the property owner and the developer to do is to by step, by step a great deal of the rules and regulations, which would be for one, having one, under one acre of disturbance. And that's just something I think that as the board moves forward with reviewing the solar law, with looking at the comprehensive plan, that this does come into play, because when the developers do this, then they don't have to do a full stormwater prevention plan. They, this is how they avoid problems and push their projects through. It is what occurred on Murray's property. And I would just like everybody to be aware of that and take it into consideration as you move forward. Thank you.
Ray Berry again, ten seventy Alexander Road. Just to let the board know, I am friends with Marcel Levley, his property adjacent to it. Out of that forty-seven acres, thirty, at least thirty acres is totally clear-cut. So it wasn't a matter of removing a tree here or a tree there, it is clear-cut, totally flat. I wish the town, if they could, or even Dale, would take a ride. Obviously, you told us earlier that Dale did go back into that property, and if Dale's there, I'm sure he can vouch for it. There's a large, large, large part of that forty-seven acres that's totally cleared.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I personally went up there a while ago, and I couldn't really tell how much was, but there is a big plateau up there, it's, that's pretty cleared off, for sure, yeah. But, I mean, again, that's Charlie's land, and I think that would be his prerogative to do that, so long as he complied with any stormwater regulations that DEC had. There's no way we can tell Charlie, hey, you own all that land, you can't, you know, can't take firewood off or you can't clear it off, you know? Not the way I understand it works.
I agree with you, but I just wanted to make the board aware that it's more than just a small clearing, it's a clear cut.
Excellent, well understood, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
This is Christina Lucchides again, just to sort of, just one last thing, please. I certainly can appreciate the board's, well, these are very tough decisions to be making, and it's very hard to listen to everybody, and it is, at times, your hands are tied, and that can be frustrating for everybody. With regards to this piece of property, with regards to all of our concerns, we, it's clear from what we're hearing that all of us on Alexander Road simply see this as, again, a simple lot line adjustment, but we see it as, well, this is just the next step in a process, in a plan. A plan exists, it just isn't being revealed by Mr. Bianchini or Mr. Rhodes. Which, our hope is that as Mr. Rhodes' parcel comes back on a board agenda, as it will, probably in the near future, with yet another segmentation here, another division there, in whatever form that it takes, that the planning board please consider the concerns, very valid concerns, based on real-life water resource issues happening right now, based on road safety, based on where the investment we have in our own homes. As you meet each and every one of the next Charlie Rhodes subdivisions, major subdivisions, minor subdivisions, it's going to be on the agenda again, and it is our hope that the planning board does consider these issues that we're all bringing up. None of us have ever said that the forefront lots that have, that were planned for single-family homes, there was never an objection to that. But we do see that something is in the works, and we anticipate that you'll be visiting that in the near future, and please take our very valid concerns into consideration as you make your decisions about the next step in this process that we are confident is going to happen. Thank you. And again, thank you for your time for the community. It's not easy doing the job that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to express an opinion or concern?
Sarah Wazowski, nine thirty-eight Alexander Road. Just, again, I want to thank the board for everything. I know, um, you've listened to a lot of us air our concerns and frustrations, and I appreciate it. Will there be a point at which the town says, what is your, what is the plan as a whole? Or is it, like you said, every time he wants to apply for something, Mr. Rhodes will apply for one more thing and one more thing? Will there question ever be asked to Mr. Rhodes about this property? What is your overall plan?
As soon as there's an application for a building permit or a subdivision for the remaining forty-nine acres, the board will ask a lot of questions. You know, the road construction itself, it's going to be a road dedicated to the town, who's going to maintain it, the access, and the construction materials, you know, the overall stormwater drainage for the road systems, the septic's will be reviewed by the Department of Health, you know, it's hard to speculate what he's going to do. He may, he may go, you know, a... He may go, you know, a ballpark up there, who knows, he might build 100 houses. It's, it's really, and it's, it's very difficult for the board to sit here and say, what's, what's he going to do next?
No, I'm asking if the board will ask.
And as Teresa pointed out, we can always say no. That's, that's why the purpose of this board is, we find that the proposal is, is completely inconsistent with, with, you know, the area, we will say no. And not like we roll over on everything that Charlie comes here. I mean, it took three years to get four lots out of that place, you know, so it's not like probably somebody's like, oh, you know, we haven't held tight and, you know, it's been a long process and you, you all know it because you participated in it. You got, I think you got what you wanted. We got, we didn't have multifamily development on the road, and the board heard that loud and clear. And I think that Charlie, well, he may not think he listens, I think he did listen. And he, he knew that there was going to be a tough haul and he might not come out of what he wants. So I think at this juncture, you're just going to have to, you know, hate to say, trust the board's judgment, but that's the best we can do at this point. And, you know, continue, it's a public process, you're always welcome to participate in any and all meetings that we have, review any and all documents to the town. If you have else here, you can ask them questions. If there's ever a permit issued or applied for, the neighbors will be notified of any, any development there or potential building. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a pretty transparent process. I, I hope you don't view it as not being transparent, there's nothing made on behind the scenes here to try to get these things through.
Oh, I don't think the town has anything behind the scenes, per se. But is there a possibility that instead of simply allowing this relatively easy lot-line adjustment, that the town might consider asking this to be re-surveyed in order to have this partition happen in light of all the concerns and history at this property?
Once the public hearing is over, the board will discuss what they want to do.
Yeah. What's, what we will do is take in all the, the thoughts that were surfaced tonight, the comments, the, you know, and close the public hearing and then the board will, will contemplate and deliberate and come up with a finding, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you again for, for listening to us and taking this time, we really appreciate it.
Okay, with that, Murray?
I'd like to make a motion on the public hearing.
Murray?
Yes.
Yes.
Liz.
Yes.
Yes.
I want to make like the next statement. I can remember when I was on dirt road and there was no houses up there. So this is called progress, by the way, and not everybody's happy with progress. They weren't happy when electric poles came in, without electricity. It's just progress.
You're here for them?
Not quite. I was here for it when I was on dirt road.
Two houses on the whole road. As far as the environmental, you, this is a, you have to batchings. Yeah, if I could, you guys could do a thorough environmental review of the original subdivision. There's a name that I'm filing, and a lot of that.
It's getting, it's growing difficult to hear you, and I know that's got to be frustrating for you guys as well, but it is growing a little difficult to hear.
Chris, we did close the official public hearing. I think if your comment was you just couldn't hear us, that's, that's okay.
That was my only comment, that it just became difficult to hear at that time.
That's fine, okay.
No, no, the survey that has not changed.
It has to change.
Yes, they were, that's correct, you're right, Murray.
Future development, we certainly understand everyone's concerns, they're, we're all property owners, we all appreciate the open space, and very valid concerns are raised. And I think at this point, what we have to approve is what's in front of us, which is a lot line adjustment. Again, another proposal, as I said, we'll review it very thoroughly and diligently consider all the concerns and environmental implications.
For 10 billion lots, it would be a whole different thing. It's supposed to be for a lot line adjustment and more job rate. Well, based on what we heard and based on the, the facts and, and testimony that we heard tonight, we thoroughly understand the issues, but I believe the board's in a position where that we're almost, we are compelled to make a, a firm decision under request for a lot line adjustment. And with, with the caveat that any future development of that land in the batch is going to, it will come under very, very deep scrutiny. And they just hope that you as the, as the neighborhood residents can live with these decisions and, and walk the walk with, with the planning board and the town officials to make sure that the rest of that land is, if it is ever developed, is developed in a, in a manner that's, you know, responsible with the community character and the needs of, of the neighborhood and the safety and the road systems. So without that, I think our motions will prompt the lot line adjustment for Charlie Rhodes on. Make the motion that that lot line adjustment will be approval. And that. Yes?
Yes.
Liz.
Yes.
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 All right, Scott, you'll have to deliver, get the deeds drawn up and deliver those to Dale down here in the county, file them correctly. Process for that. Teresa can help you with that.
Yeah, I mean, Joe will help with the Joe financial, they'll be, you'll have to bring in a new minor, so it can be signed, so you'll have the deed, right, Joe?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I'm having trouble hearing you, but.
Do you hear what Teresa said, you'll have to get the new deeds and milearms?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we'll get those out to the town.
Okay. Okay. That'll complete this phase of the process, but again, and I want to apologize for my actions, but understand how we've guided in our decision-making and that we still, you know, undergoing a lot of scrutiny on the next, any future developments in that area. So hopefully, this decision will be a good one for everybody, but time will tell. It's, it's very, very difficult to speculate on any of this. And thank you for your, your concerns, comments, and the time you took out to participate. Daniel Papa.
Yes, sir, I'm here.
I made the motion to open the public hearing for the Daniel Papa special use permit to construct a two-family dwelling on Lake Road. It's a continuation after reopening or reopening it. So Daniel, we did put you on hold here for a bit. I think Dale did file and looked at the road and the site, but Dale's on your list tonight. So we made a motion to open the public hearing. Yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, Daniel, I, I, if you're there, and I know the last time there were a considerable number of constituents from the area that had concerns, the board listened, looked at the general layout of the area, we've got some of our former decisions on this. Is there anything else that you, you need to report to us tonight?
Mr. Chairman, my name's Andy Brick, I'm a land use attorney in Albany, and I've been brought on by Dan to help him obtain his special use permit. Good evening, can you hear me okay?
And thank you for identifying yourself as counsel for him.
Okay, sure. Um, I, I just felt, I, I know you, you've reviewed this in depth at the last meeting and there's a lot of discussion. I've been working with Dan since that last meeting. There were just a couple items I wanted to touch upon for your consideration this evening, and then both Dan and I are here to answer any questions the board or the public may have at this point. It, as you know, the property's in the Lake District where what he's proposing is allowed by special, by, by special use permit. And in reviewing the criteria for the special use permit contained in your code at section 14.6.2, um, this, what he's proposing meets all, all of the criteria necessary in order for you to grant the special use permit. Just a couple things to highlight. Again, it's allowed in the zone, it's allowable use by special use, it's, it's a well-built structure, it's on a large enough parcel, it's .4 acres, it's one of the larger, if not largest parcel on Lake Avenue. Bringing in the additional dwelling unit will increase town tax base because obviously it'll be reassessed, and it also increases housing opportunity. In terms of impact upon parking and traffic, there is more than enough onsite room for parking. He won't, the, you know, future people at this property won't have to park on Lake Avenue, there's more than enough room to make sure that all residents park on the site, on the property itself. I, in terms of traffic, utilizing the Institute of Traffic Engineers analysis for a single-family dwelling, for a single dwelling unit, single dwelling units, detached dwelling units generate one car, one, one traffic trip per dwelling unit for the peak PM hour. So by bringing on this studio, we'd be bringing in one additional traffic trip along Lake Avenue in the PM peak hour. There's currently 12 single-family residences along Lake Avenue, so the current traffic as per ITE analysis would be 12 trips, which would be one trip every five minutes. But by bringing in and approving this special use permit, it would result in 13 trips under ITE analysis, which would result in one car every 4 minutes and 36 seconds. So clearly, it's not going to have a, a large impact or any significant impact on traffic along Lake Avenue, and combined with the ability for onsite parking, we don't think we, we cause any problems with traffic and parking. Also, in addition, there is sufficient capacity in both the water and septic onsite, which of course he'll be demonstrating to the, the building inspector as needed. So there's no impact to infrastructure. And lastly, character of the neighborhood, I did a quick analysis of Lake Avenue utilizing Schenectady County Real Property Tax Service information, and there are, as I mentioned, 12 single-family homes on Lake Avenue currently. Of those 12, there's one, one bedroom, there are four two-bedroom homes, there are five three-bedroom homes, and there are two four-bedroom homes, for a total of 32 bedroom units along Lake Avenue. The, the addition of what, what he's proposing and granting in the special use permit will only add one additional bedroom to the 33, and there's already 32, so it's, it's a 3% increase, it, it's insignificant. And why do I analyze it under bedrooms? Because clearly bedrooms mean impacts upon water and sewer, water and septic, and the additional one on this particular property isn't going to change the character of the neighborhood when right along the, the little avenue that it's on, there are five three-bedroom homes and two four-bedroom homes. So all that is a long way, a long-winded way of saying that this proposal won't have any significant environmental impact upon the, the neighborhood or the community, and it's not going to have a negative impact upon the character of the community. With that being said, we're here to answer any questions the board or the public may have.
Okay, I want to thank you, that was a thorough analysis for sure. I think Dan could have used your house last public hearing, it's a bit flustered, I think, but that's, that's a lot of good information, factual information, you know, supported by data that helps the board decide these issues.
Sure.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to make some statements?
You want to go, Dan?
Please identify yourself and your.
I, I have a question for the board. I was wondering, don't people normally have to submit a plan prior to construction so that it can either be approved or disapproved, whereas in this case, the construction has already been completed? Could you answer that before?
There was a building permit applied for for the construction of the garage and apartment, so that would have been the process. The garage. Yeah, and would like, could you identify by name, who you are? Make the comments.
Oh, Don Russo.
Your address.
238 Lake Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to speak.
Yes.
Yeah, my name's Paul Goska, I live at 198 Lake Avenue. All right, first I'd like you to remember that, to point out that we had 11, there's 11 houses on Lake Avenue besides the applicant, nine of those homeowners signed the.
Can you mute yourself?
I'm sorry, I muted myself. All right, can you, okay. And over 80% of the homeowners on Lake Avenue disapproved this application. I sort of remember at one time in, in Duane'sburg, they wanted to put a propane facility down there, and that went through because the residents did not want it, okay, even though it was a commercial property. Again, I like to say, I've lived here for 18 years, and I lived into, I moved into a residential neighborhood. I do not think it's fair to the residents of Lake Avenue to have someone who has lived here on the street for about two years to change the neighborhood so they can profit off their property at the expense of the neighbors. At our last meeting, the applicant stated about how much money he spent converting his property. The only building permit the applicant had was for the construction of a detached garage in which the neighbors did not object to. Then the applicant converted their unit into an apartment and constructed a structure to connect the garage to the house without a permit. If the structure is within code, which I believe it isn't, the, the town should have them either remove it or correct it. I don't believe that he should be awarded for violation of the town building codes in the beginning. During our last meeting, a member of the committee asked the applicant about how the roof was attached and connected between the house and the attached garage. The applicant tried to avoid answering this question, but ended up answering the question vaguely. I'll answer that for you. The roof on the garage is higher than the roof on the house. The house roof was not extended to connect to the garage. The garage in the house are connected by a makeshift addition that is below the roof of the house by at least three feet. I do not believe that that structure is within code, and the best thing is during the winter, when the snow comes, that gap's going to fill up with snow, and it's going to compromise the structure. Again, I believe the town should force the applicant to remove it or correct it. Again, remember, the residents of Lake Avenue are against this applicant, and I'd like to ask the lawyer on the applicant, what house on Lake Avenue has four bedrooms? I'm sitting here with owners of the bigger houses on the property, and no one on the street has four bedrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Unfortunately, our building, right there, Dale Warner, is not available this evening, but I believe Dale has been out there a few times, and there were code issues, it would have been dealt with. So I don't believe there is a code issue, I can't speak for Dale.
Mr. Chairman, would I be able to respond to Mr. Russo and Mr. Goska?
Yes.
Sure. Okay, first, with Mr. Russo, I would just point out that there is a section of the Duane'sburg Town Code, it's section 15.4I, which actually sets forth a process when an apartment gets built without the proper certificate of occupancy, and that's the process that's being followed now at this juncture. If you look at the notice of the public hearing, the public hearing, the notice of the public hearing for this matter specifically references it's being initiated because of section 15.4I. So that's not to say he had all the proper permits in place when he started, but once it was realized he needed additional permits and a special use permit, he's been nothing but cooperative with Mr. Warner, and this process is a result of the process that's set forth in the code at 15.4I. For Mr. Goska, related to the code questions, I would have to defer to Mr. Warner. We're here for a special use permit, which is a permit that allows the use. Of course, anything constructed has to meet local and state building codes. I believe that it does, but that would be up to Mr. Warner to determine, and I'm sure that he will do so. It's my understanding he's been to the property for, on a number of occasions. In response to the question about the four bedrooms, I'm taking my information from the Schenectady County Real Property Tax Service Image Mate Online SDG service, which is readily available from the county website, and according to their information, which I believe they get from your town assessor, 170 Lake Avenue and 184 Lake Avenue are listed as four-bedroom homes. 170 is listed owner is a Ms. Grossman, and 184 is also listed as Ms. Grossman, but they're separate properties. So again, I got my information from Schenectady County, and that's exactly what I'm basing it on.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Hi, my name is John DeVry. I live at 120 Lake Ave. My point of this is, if you give this to this gentleman, why can't we all just do this? And it is a for-profit, and you have substantially changed the neighborhood. Once you start down this road and allow this to go through, you are saying that our neighborhood does not matter anymore, and we feel this is very much wrong. This is a slippery slope, we should not be going down. These are supposed to be single dwelling, it is for the good of the community, and if you do one, why can't we all do it? And then you are going to be looking at, you are changing this neighborhood, and I don't believe anyone has the right to do that.
We have any other comments? Thank you for that, Cam. Any other comments?
Hello? Patricia Carvin, reside at 208 Lake Ave. I usually don't speak, but I feel it's really important tonight. My husband and I have enjoyed 25 years at Mariva Lake. We have come to meet, know, and respect many wonderful people in our neighborhood, and it has always been a friendly, stable, and secure place to reside. In these past meetings, many concerns have been voiced, and I believe if we did not truly care so much about our neighborhood, we would not come together to speak with this boom process, which I admit is definitely a challenge to me as an older person. The rights of a community should be valued and considered when making an important decision which can affect, which can affect so many. So I hope all whose votes are considered in your decision, and I do thank you for your time with regards to this matter, and but, again, I hope the right decision is made for all of us who are affected. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak?
Yes.
Please identify yourself.
Hi, I wasn't sure if you, I did raise my hand. My name is T.O. Daly. I live at 148 Lake Avenue. One of the comments I'd like to make is, of the number of homes that they've identified, not all of those homes are year-round homes, so I think you're severely underestimating the impact on all the resources, the sewer, the water, and everything else, because a number of residents, including myself, are there a very limited number of months of the year. So we are probably underutilizing a lot of the things that some of the other people plan to use year-round, and we don't have to worry about having the plowing of the road or as much water as some of the other residents, but having listened to everything that has taken place in the discussion on Alexander Road on a waterfront community, I think, like I just heard, this is a very slippery slope.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? If no one else has anything to say, I think it's, we'll make a motion to close this public hearing for the Daniel Papa special use permit. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. So the reason we extended it because of those open questions, I guess, pretty much, Mr. Burke wants to answer, but that's what we sent it for. Again, from a, from a Seeker, Sleepy Mind, and Holy Review Act perspective, this is a type two option, which means we won't be providing a negative declaration. Obviously, it's really, I know, impacted the environment type issue. And the board is now going to consider, make steps.
Again, I got to speak up. Being an owner of a couple of two-family homes in Duane'sburg, I researched it, apparently it's legal according to our zoning, however, that lot, being the size of it is, I disagree with the attorney. You have two families in there, you got more by, two people per family, you got a boat, camper trailer, half an acre, less than half an acre to me, it looks like. Might as well be parked in a Walmart, things in the parking lot. I know it's legal, and I can't run against it, I guess, but I just, I wish the owner had second thoughts and knew it, but I spoke my piece.
To put a condition on a special use, they should condition a special use permit that any vehicles of any kind will be parked only on the lot and not on the roadway, because there are substantial problems with, with people, you know, on several of those very small roadways around here, I have a lot of them parked on both roads. So you could certainly make that a condition of their approval, and I'm sure the attorney for Mr. Papa would not agree, would not disagree that we have the ability to still condition the approval. It sounds like it's hidden intention in any event to make sure that everybody parks in the driveway on the property. I think it's, it's a little bit uncomfortable because Dale's not here today, and it would be nice to be able to get the question answered about the structure, just to make sure everything is in line. The enforcement, the property violation was resolved, Mr. Papa paid the fine, so his attorney is correct, they're following the appropriate procedure, they're not going ahead and, yeah, looking at the question, is the board, if they have enough information to call them tonight, or do you want to defer to your attorney's decision? That's up to you.
One question, do they, for the Dale part of it, do they have a certificate of occupancy for the apartment? Okay, so he won't issue that until he makes sure everything's okay. So I'm comfortable with that part being deferred to Dale, because he can't issue the CO because it hasn't been approved under...
Right.
Under... So if it comes out, they can't get a CO, they're not going to lock your... Right? Is that... Okay.
Let me ask you a private question. What's your current parking situation? Are you parking on the street itself, or can you imagine a situation or forecast a situation where all your vehicles, whether you had a car, boat, whatever, and your tenant had a car, boat, could also be parked, everything off the street? Would that be an issue?
And it's Andy Brick again. I believe that's perfectly able to be accomplished, but Dan was here, I don't know if he still is, but he should try it directly.
Yes, 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 guys. With all due respect to what's going on, I have, even with the apartment that's there, I have the least amount of cars on the street. At any given time, this entire summer or spring, there, you know, besides if, you know, I had someone working there, on average, there were three cars at most ever on my property overnight, on average. You know, maybe a couple times, there were four, you know, but, um, again, you know, this is, I'm sorry to say it like this, but, you know, but the parking is absurd to be, you know, for anyone to be worried about, because I am certainly not the issue on the street when it comes to cars. Thank you.
Mr. Papa, I guess the question is, could you, when I condition on your special use permit, that basically led that, you know, you needed to park off the side on your property, so parking on the street, you know?
Yeah, I mean, okay, yeah. Of course, yeah, I mean, if that's a stipulation, of course, yeah, I'm not, again, you know, I'm not worried about anyone, myself or anyone else, parking on the street. So yes, if that had to be a, you know, if that has to go into this, you know, 100%, let's do it.
Marty, does that take care of your concern?
I guess so. Who was he renting to today? Is it rented now?
No, no.
On stipulations, on temporary rentals like Airbnb, we exclude those that are special use, that this is only long-term rentals.
The town has not distinguished the community types of rentals as you want to refer to. That's one of the things that they're...
Could I interrupt? I would like to hear the answer to that question.
I would like to be able to communicate the answer, but I don't really know how.
We can't hear you at all.
Okay. I do apologize. We are trying, as you all know, COVID is a difficult situation, and it's microphone that I'm holding was specially brought in to try to make it easier for people to hear. So...
It's not...
It's not. Okay. Appreciate that. So the answer to the question is, the town Duane'sburg zoning code has passed currently regularly short-term vacation rentals. The town is in the process of looking at the comprehensive plan and also considering changes to the zoning code, and that is something that we will have to address if at all in that context.
Okay, but you can't do a specific just in this one instance?
No, no, I, no, sir, I don't think...
Okay, thank you. Mr. Papa is determining, maybe a little perspective, if you had to estimate the total population on that road and a number of potential increases in residents due to Mr. Papa's proposal, I mean, is it, you're going to have two new people on the road, or 10 new people, or five, or just for a perspective? I think the neighbors are very anxious about somebody who's going to be 30 new people on the road coming to this apartment, and, you know, maybe you could just kind of give us a little...
Yeah, and if I understand the question correctly, a little difficult to hear, but you're asking how much population, how much traffic, how much people would this special use permit generate?
Compared to what's there, say, if there's 100 people on the road.
It's a small apartment unit, it's probably, it's probably too small for two. So it's more of a studio for one person, but could it be possible to have a couple in there? Sure. It's always difficult to analyze how many people are actually on a given street, because some bedrooms are shared, some aren't, so the general rule of thumb is you count the number of bedrooms, and that's how you extrapolate the population. There's currently 33 bedrooms on the, on the street, according to county records, there could be more, there could be less, but county records say 32. This is an apartment that's going to add one more, so there's going to be 33, which is a 3% increase, you know, compared to what's there. It's, we're going from 32 beds to 33 beds. I don't think it'd be a significant impact, and it might be if there wasn't sufficient parking, because then you'd end up with a, with a car on the street all the time, an additional car. That's not the case here. He could park everybody onto the property, and I believe I just heard him say he's willing to agree to that as a condition of any special use permit.
But it still does not address the problem of changing the neighborhood.
But it still does not address the problem of changing the neighborhood, even if one person can get away with it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we. We're not in general hearing, you must be muted, but we did close the public hearing, so we do have your concern in the record.
So, so in front of you, you have, uh, in 14.6.2, you have the criteria for special use permit. Um, and it says your findings would be that the use is reasonably necessary or convenient to the public health, welfare, or the economic or social benefit community. C, that such use is suitably located in relation to transportation, water, sewage requirements that are in. Um, and that the facilities are otherwise adequate to accommodate the needs. And C, that the character of the neighborhood and values of surrounding property is reasonably papered. So the zoning code allows only one, uh, unit, so you can only have two load units on a lot in the allied district. That's, that's what's allowed here, right, the special use permit. So if somebody wants to make a motion one way or the other, you should use those criteria and making, you know, and making a motion.
We're seeing they didn't hear what you said.
And, and like it said, if you wanted to create town next month and.
This is so horrible.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, uh, we just got some good advice from, from Teresa or, or also. I think we're going to take another hard look at this. Uh, the comments on precedent setting have always come up, they come up with 99% of these special use permits. You're setting a precedent, everybody's going to put an apartment in their house. Uh, we have criteria in the zoning code and we need to talk with our co-inspector, co-enforcement on Dale Warner to make sure that everything is, uh, approvable. And my, it's my recommendation that we defer making a, a final decision on this until, uh, our next meeting, which is Thursday, Thursday in October. It'll give us some time to, to really assess the, the feelings of the residents. I know you guys feel very, very strongly against this. The attorney made a kind of a, a, a good factual presentation that this is only one additional bedroom out of the 32 that are, that are on the road. That's kind of a compelling argument that it's not really a big impact. Maybe not in your opinion, but I mean, the numbers are what the numbers are. Uh, it does open up question of, of, you know, further every neighbor's going to put an apartment in their garage, but that requires a substantial investment too, so.
Do you have Dale provide us if there are other, you know, in-law apartment dwellings around the lake? Maybe not on that particular road, but South Shore Road, um, and Mariahville Road on the other side of the lake. I think that would be helpful to see, you know, although that road may or may not have any right now. The lake itself, it either does already support that additional use or it doesn't.
Yeah, there is, maybe, maybe someone in the, there is a, we believe that there's a duplex unit on Lake Avenue somewhere.
Yeah, on South Shore.
On South Shore, right?
Or in Ice Side of this.
Yeah.
There is a, there's also a duplex on Spring Road, which is right across from Lake, for Lake Avenue.
Okay. All right, so give us, give us some, some time on this, you know, we're not going to tip our hand either way at this point. Uh, I see a lot of, you know, faces saying we should discuss this further till we get a solid decision. And, uh, we'll be back next month, so.
So motion to table?
Well, motion to table the final decision on the special use permit for Daniel Papato. Our next meeting, October 15th, October 15th. Daniel, come back, okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
You all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're into new business and we've got a referral from John Isman. Johnny, you there?
They be the engineers?
Where are we in this? Got approval from the county?
Yeah, the county just had a question about whether it's three lots or four lots. Joe, why don't you go over the lot layout for us?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Joe, we'd like to kind of delineate the, the boundaries. The county had some questions as to whether the, the number of lots was three or four.
Yeah, at the, we adjusted this, uh, based on the comments from the county.
Okay.
Lot one includes the, uh, land where the Ismanns live on, uh, Route seven. And then it's land hooked with that piece way to the north. Uh, so that lot one is both the land along Route seven and the land way to the north. And then we're adjusting the lands of Denny in the middle such that, uh, we're creating one new lot. We call that Lot Three, which will be 4.65 acres. And that'll be for, uh, the Denny's, uh, not the Denny's, excuse me, that'll be for, uh, John Isman, uh, the son of, uh, Senior John Isman.
Lot one and Lot Four on the map?
We had Lot Four, uh, we had Lot Four as the way, we've eliminated Lot Four and combined Lot, Lot One and Four into one lot. The way we had it, uh, a couple of years, a year or two ago, and we originally subdivided.
But Lot, at least on the plan we're looking at, Lot One and Lot Four do not touch each other.
That's correct. And that's the way it was when it was approved, uh, a couple of years ago.
They're already non-contiguous, we're just changing the boundaries. We're proposing to change the boundary. You can have a multi-parcel lot. It, I mean, it, it looks funny on the map, but. That's, that's the question. I mean, tax purposes, it's cheaper to add a larger lot than.
Yeah, the lot way to the north is not really a usable lot. That's why it's hooked with the, what is now Lot One, uh, so that it couldn't be created as, as its own lot. And then, uh, nobody pays taxes on it and goes to the county.
It was, I mean, this thing.
This way it's.
That walk around, but they were three.
Oh, Mark.
Doesn't have access to, it doesn't have access to 351 or whatever, you know, because there's a guard rail and it's like, really. Yeah, it's like, so you can't, is that, and you can tell Zach's really right, I mean, if you drive by there on your way.
Yeah, you did, you looked down that way.
Okay. Yeah, to the north.
Yeah, you know, they don't have a breaking access to 351.
I'm wondering if, yeah, maybe should, should the plot plan show Lot One and Lot Four? I think that's what I'm wrestling with, showing that.
Well, I think, I think what we have is not the updated map where it would show the arrow would essentially look like a Z, you know, and a L.
Yeah.
Melissa, do we have the updated?
The updated map is on the screen that I'm looking at.
Yeah, see the, see the dog legs that come down? That's it, that's.
Did we have a public hearing on this yet?
No.
But if there's type one action, it's sort of.
And we have a third.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Cause it was just getting reviewed. I think we should just get clearly made into the coordination.
Yeah, I will, uh, make a motion that the town, I will make a motion that the town of Duansburg serve as lead agency for the speaker review for the Iceman Denny, so division and lot line adjustment proposal.
I'll second that.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Marty.
Yes.
And as so folks are aware, we anticipate this would be a type one speaker review because it's adjacent to the Quaker Street store district. And one thing I'd like to ask is I have started working on the speaker documentation for it, Joe, and I had difficulty describing the action. So you really need a good description for this action.
You in, Joe?
I, Joe, did you not hear?
No.
Yes, I'm, I'm here, but I, I'm having a very difficult time hearing.
Okay, yeah.
So, Joe, on the part one of the full environmental assessment form that you provided.
Yes.
I, I don't believe the description of action thoroughly describes what you're proposing. So if you could provide a bit more narrative there, we want to make sure that it's correctly reflected in the final speaker documentation.
Okay, I can update that.
And then, um, Melissa, as soon as we get that, then we'll send it around to all the involved interested agencies. So, full crew, I know it's going to be.
The Bay Ship-O, D E C.
Uh, D O T?
D O T is the one, yeah. County, oh, sorry, yeah.
I think we might already. Don't think.
Yeah, I think D O T, D E C and Ship-O.
Okay.
No, so the next one we have the, that it's scheduled.
Yeah, okay. All right, so Joe, we're going to send this stuff out to the other interested agencies as, you know, they're now the, what are the agencies that are trying to? If you can get that, uh, long form E A F narrative, uh, back to us, speed it up a little bit so it's, you know, because I think even the county was a little confused as to exactly what was going on. Uh, not really, just felt to understand, but when we put it in the record, somebody's going to read it and kind of view it, just kind of double check the plan. And then, uh, once we get the responses back from the, uh, concerned agencies, we'll set up a public hearing and go there. So probably we won't have much next meeting, so thanks. Yeah. Yeah, so let's, let's plan on, I'm trying to get some public room set for November. I mean, it's going to take, you know, all the, all of a month to get the responses back to the, the way the government, um. Okay. I don't, I don't forecast any big issues, but it's just a process, you know, we gotta go through. But you do it, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Old business, okay? Okay, when's old business? The Stuart Shop. Who's representing, uh, Jim?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yep, loud and clear.
All right, excellent. Well, good evening, everyone. Um, I could, uh, give you a brief recap of, uh, what we've done since the last meeting, if you'd like.
Absolutely.
All right, sounds good. So, um, we had our public hearing last month, um, opened and closed. We received some comments from Ingalls and Associates, D O T, D E C, Ship-O. We've provided some responses and some correspondence, some letters from, uh, which would address, um, all those comments. I believe we've, uh, addressed all the comments. We are still working with D O T. We've submitted our stage two application. Um, that is ongoing. Um, again, they're very backed up, but, uh, we're making some good progress there. We've got a, um, no impact letter from Ship-O. Um, we've got some clear direction from D E C as far as endangered species, which we're happy to comply with. Um, we've received, um, addressed Ingalls' comments. We've received some additional comments today from Ingalls, uh, as far as things to add to the, to the SWIP, which we have no issue with. They're very minor. Um, so, um, we're very happy to be here tonight. We're looking forward to hopefully moving forward. We're very anxious to, um, get underway with this project and, and we're hoping that, uh, you know, that we can do that. So if there's anything else we can address, we're, we're, we're happy to do so.
If you have any questions for Dave, he's on there.
Yeah, hi, good evening, everybody.
Hi, Dave, I think we all have a copy of your September 15th letter that folks have reviewed, we're currently looking at again.
Yeah, would you like me just to take you through it, uh, just give you a real brief synopsis?
Yes.
Uh, Jim gave a pretty good summary of, uh, since the last meeting and the public hearing. Uh, they did respond with a response letter to our comments, Ingalls as the T D. Uh, they did prepare, uh, additional or revised plans, site plans, as well as a updated SWIP. Uh, they have satisfactorily responded, uh, in general to our comments relative to the plan and SWIP. As Jim mentioned, we had a few minor comments that would really be housekeeping items relative to the SWIP and the plans. Uh, they have responded to the D O T comment letter and as Jim stated, they're working on their stage two permit, so that's good. We are recommending that as a condition of approval. Uh, they, they have received sign-offs, uh, relative to the northern long-eared bat, uh, from D E C. That was via an email that Jim had forwarded to us, uh, as well as the O P R H P, uh, no impact letter relative to historic and archaeological impacts. Uh, on our second page, on item one D, uh, we put together what we thought might. On our second page, on item one D, we put together what we thought might be some appropriate conditions if the board decides to make an approval under the special use permit, section fourteen point six point two. One would be conditioned upon a DOT permit, utility and non, nonutility, for the driveway and any associated stormwater features. One thing we did want to make clear, and I think Teresa did in an email, that the town does not have any interest in maintaining any of the facilities associated with the, with the new Stewart shop, namely any stormwater facilities. Those would be something that would have to be maintained by the applicant, and the town does not own any water or sewer facility. So the town has no municipal facilities in that area that service it. So as shown on the site plan, any of the water and sewer would be through the, the private well, private septic system, which Jim did submit a permit from Scepti County Health Department. So that's another condition we have, item three, county and New York State Health Department. I'm not sure if that one is appropriate or not, but we put it in there, both county and state health department. DEC relative to the PBS or the petroleum bulk storage facility, obtain the necessary ZBA permits, which I believe we do have a confirmation of that from the zoning board of appeals. Ultimately, they should file prior to construction. They should file the notice of intent for the stormwater coverage under the Speedies, GP twenty oh one. If there's any other federal, state, or local permits required, those should be submitted as well. Satisfy all of our TD comments as listed. And a couple more items that I did not put on the letter. We would want to make sure that the parcel merger has taken place and whatever appropriate filings with the county clerk have taken place prior to building permit. And we did discuss a little bit at the last meeting, concern for light spillover or light trespass onto adjacent properties as well as sky glow. So we would like to put in the appropriate conditions that would address lighting and potential sky glow. And then, as Jim alluded to, we did have a couple SWIP comments mainly related to the redevelopment chapter and specifically where the soil restoration activities will occur and what will those soil restorations consist of, including amendments, deep ripping, and decompaction of any areas that are being claimed to be converted from a pervious to an, to a, from an impervious to a pervious area, and then just general restoration of the site. So I think with that being said, we're, we're, we're satisfied from a technical standpoint. The next steps would be to take a look at your seeker determination and then potentially look at the three criteria relative to the special use permit for the development of the convenience and service station within the C one commercial zone. Will I be glad to answer any specific questions that the board might have?
What, what do we need as far as some notes for the light trespass and sky glow? How soon can we get that?
Well, the, the applicant has, the applicant has submitted a photometric plan. A photometric plan essentially shows that there is no light trespass other than at the DOT, right away at the two entrances with twenty and thirty, which is fine. So I know that you've had other projects, namely the Hanaford. So what I would recommend is that you just replicate whatever those conditions were, if we can find those within the, within the records.
Okay, we can find those. What I think we'll do is take your seven or eight conditions, we'll stick those right as conditions of the special use permit. And along with federal belts we need. So be pretty well satisfied with the review was.
Yeah, I think the only, the only two conditions that I penciled in after were the parcel merger and the appropriate filing at the Scepti County Clerk's office. If there's a plat that has to be filed. I don't know if Jim has done that yet. And then the conditions relative to not allowing any type of trespass of lighting or sky glow, which we can come up with a condition for that.
Yeah, actually, the, the lot merger is complete and certainly any, any conditions that were placed on Hanaford, you know, we, we'd be willing to work with that. You know, certainly we, Hanaford is, I mean, all our fixtures are downlit and recessed. And looking at Hanaford's lighting, we would, I think what we've proposed is, is certainly going to be less intense than they have. It looks like they have very tall thirty-foot fixtures all throughout the lot. So I don't, I don't think, I don't anticipate what we're proposing to be any, anything greater than that. And I think it's, again, we, we always try to find the balance between safety and any off-site impacts. So I'm pretty confident what we're proposing is going to be acceptable. But again, if, obviously, if there's any adjustments that need to be looked at, we're willing to do that. As long as they're safe.
Are there any, any questions for the, for the town's people on this proposal? Okay. So the seeker is next. Elizabeth, read the determination of significance.
So this was Town of Duanesburg, determined this was a seeker unlisted action, and we've completed the short environmental assessment form. And first, I want to make sure, can everybody hear me?
We can. Yes.
So with that, I'll read the Town of Duanesburg Planning Board's determination of significance. The Town of Duanesburg Planning Board has completed an environmental review of the proposed Stewart special use permit and the merging of two lots to create one parcel totaling three point nine five acres. The project will construct a new approximately four thousand square foot convenience store in addition to an approximately two thousand square foot canopy covering four fueling dispensers with eight fueling points. The proposal is consistent with the town comprehensive plan and complies with the town zoning ordinance. It is not located in a critical environmental area, is not in the hundred-year flood plain, is not a remediation site, has no known regulated wetlands, is not a historic resource listed or eligible for the state or national register of historic places, and is not in an archaeologically sensitive area. The project had, area has been identified as having threatened endangered species, the northern long-eared bat. The New York State Department of Environmental Conservation has been consulted. And while it is not required, it is recommended to avoid minimize potential harm to the bats. All tree removal activities occur between October thirty first and March thirty first. The future construction will require the use of temporary soil and control measures to prevent stormwater pollution. More than one acre of disturbance will occur, and a stormwater pollution prevention plan has been prepared pursuant to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation's requirements and their stormwater management design manual. The project will secure the necessary state's Department of Environmental Conservation petroleum bulk storage permit and any other required permits or approvals. The project will also require construction of a new septic system and abandonment of the old system at the current Stewart store adjacent to this location. Approval will be secured through the New York State Department of Health and the County Health Department for this work. Based on this information, the planning board has determined the proposed special use permit and merging of two lots will not result in any potentially significant adverse environmental impact, and a negative declaration is made for the purposes of article eight of the Environmental Conservation Law. So I will make that motion for the negative declaration. And just to clarify for folks too, as Dave mentioned, they did secure all the approvals necessary from Shipo, DOT, DEC, we have those letters. So I will make that motion.
I'll second that.
Yes.
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 Marty.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
Tom.
Thanks. All right, what I'm doing is just briefly, section fourteen point six point two, regarding the criteria for the issues of special use permits. So that we're on the same page. And it says, special use permits, after due public notice and hearing and subject to the appropriate conditions, performance standards, and safeguards, the planning board may issue special use permits for any of the uses for which this ordinance requires the obtaining of such permits. No special use permit shall be granted until the planning board shall find and determine that, A, such use is reasonably necessary or convenient to public health, welfare, or the economic or social benefit of the community. B, such use is suitably located in relation to transportation, water, and sewer requirements of this ordinance, or were not specifically required, that such facilities are otherwise adequate to accommodate the anticipated use. And C, the character of the neighborhood and values of the surrounding property is reasonably safeguarded. But based on those criteria, I am going to recommend that the special use permit for the Stewart shop construction be approved subject to the conditions that we have received from our town designated engineer Ingalls. And they are contained in a letter from Ingalls dated September fifteenth. I'll read the, the conditions. I think, maybe there's nine of them. The special use permit will be subject to obtaining DOT permits for the new driveway location and associated stormwater features that Town of Duanesburg does not have any interest in the maintenance response tools or any utilities within the state right of way. Number two, the applicant shall obtain the necessary DEC part six thirteen petroleum bulk storage permits. The applicant shall obtain other required permits from Scepti County and New York State Department of Health permits. He must obtain the Town of Duanesburg's ZBA approval on all requested variances. Must file a notice of intent, NOI, for stormwater coverage under the New York State DEC Speedies general permit, GP X twenty dash oh oh one. He must obtain any other federal, state, and local permits required. He must satisfy all outstanding town designated engineer comments. So, and then condition eight would be, I think we've already satisfied, the parcel merger and filings must be completed with the county. And that the issues of light trespass and sky glow must be adequately addressed. And with those conditions, anybody else, any other ones they want to add? I think I think I'm on a motion to approve the special use permit. Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I think we. We're good to go, okay?
All right, thank you, everybody. I really appreciate it, all your efforts.
All right, we'll be on for next week.
All right, have a good night, everybody, thanks.
Thanks.
All right. One more, one more thing here tonight. What time you got a verdict, Mr. Jefferson?
Hi, how are you? Good evening, everybody.
The party fell asleep over here, so we don't.
I'll try to make this quick, sorry. This is in reference to four fifty-two Eaton Corners Road, seeking a special use permit for a workshop garage slash in-law apartment. I had two matters to follow up on, on the previous meeting last month. One of them was a copy of my well report, which I forwarded to Melissa the night of the meeting after we were done. I think I originally said I was, I think my well was originally set up for ten gallons, I think I had said. But I dug it in twenty seventeen, and I actually, I actually pulled paperwork, because it actually has twenty gallons a minute. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record, I was wrong in speaking ten gallons a minute. So that is a copy of the, the, that would be in the copy of the well report I sent Melissa. The other matter was getting a survey done. So I, I couldn't meet the criteria for this meeting because the field super that would do the survey was actually on vacation, and it took me about two weeks to get the CAD file from the original subdivision, from the original surveyor. So Tuesday, I have a survey being done, this upcoming Tuesday. And when that's done, I'm going to forward that to my septic engineer, so he can give you a ballpark idea, you know, based on the, the survey that I do of where those will be located. And I'll definitely have that for the next meeting. So those were, I think, the two items I needed on my end to follow up on. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that question.
We're wondering if you could have the survey completed.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I can't understand the question you're asking.
Can you have the survey completed by October fifth? And in our hands?
Yeah, right now, as it sits Tuesday, if, if everything goes well and they can find the points from the previous CAD drawing, any original survey, it's only about an hour and a half of office time to, to get me what I need. And I'm thinking I should definitely have it before October fifth. That's what I'm being told, providing everything checks out on Tuesday.
Under the public hearing, ninth or fifteenth of October. And then be able to hold a public hearing next month.
Okay, you said October eighth, did you say?
Listen, I think, I think you're very well speaker.
October fifth, I need the survey done by my.
October fifth, okay, yeah, that, that should not be a problem. I can keep Melissa up to date.
Yeah. And then we can have a public hearing by October fifth. Are you ready for that? Okay. October fifteenth, public hearing.
Okay, you need it by, you need it October fifth, if I understand you correctly, so we could have a public hearing by the fifteenth.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that should not be a problem.
Okay, I'll email you tomorrow or tonight, and I'll let you know.
Okay.
But October fifth.
Okay, that would be fine.
Yes. Liz, Marty, Josh, Tom, Michael.
Yes.
Mike. Approved. All right. Yep, I'll email you, Mike, and I'll let you know the dates, okay?
Okay, you're going to email me, you said?
Yep.
Okay, that's fine, I'm sorry, it's just very difficult to hear you go. Okay, I'll, I'll look forward to your email.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody, have a good evening. Is that it? Sure.
All ready? You got a date or something? We'll let that go. I think that was, yeah. I think we did note the date issue at the last meeting. But I think they were for July anyway. I can make a motion to approve August twentieth minutes.
Josh.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Liz. Marty.
Yes.
Um, sorry, I just was, I'm, I'm addressing, there's three things. Copy the board for the county referral, we have county referral. Okay, can you leave yours on?
Yeah.
I just want to see.
Uh, we just need a motion to a jury.
Before we do ID.
Yes. Yeah. Mike.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Tom. Josh.
Yes.
Marty.
Yes.
Hi.